They're all over east side.
Yes, okay, okay, all right, well, we are back from executive session. And number three on the agenda is consideration of options for Brussels Street between Exchange and Newmark. We've got some information in our packet here, and then we've got our wonderful Public Works Director, Mr. Ralph Dunham. He's gonna share some information with us this evening.
Good evening. Most of these options I put in the file we discussed before. It's fairly simple, this has been going on for a while, this project, it was opened up primarily to Brussels Street was opened up. I kind of gave you a history on it, Bill might have been familiar with it and Tim, but I didn't think the rest of you were really familiar with how this evolved originally. Basically started in two thousand and three with a cul-de-sac, wasn't even a through street design. Then went to a through street with an LID, which the citizens, you had a tremendous turnout from what I read in the file. Mostly because they didn't want to pay for it and I wasn't there, so I can't tell you the rest of it, there wasn't a lot of notes in the file, but a hundred people showing up for a meeting, it must have been a pretty well-spread LID is what I'm gonna say. Finally, they agreed upon closing the street, extending it like a through street, only paving to the limits of the original subdivision. And closing it, it sat that way undeveloped and for those who don't know, basically, the property on the east side of this development is pretty much undevelopable anyway. It's, it's a canyon. So the developer wasn't set up to make a lot of money on this, I'm not saying he didn't, I would guess he didn't make any, to be honest, but that's a total educated guess. Once we opened the street up, after the traffic committee had reviewed it, saying because of the accident history at Edgewood down the hill, the site distance. Then it actually developed, why I can't tell you, but maybe people drove by it now and saw the lots for sale, but then it actually developed, so all this issues have developed since two thousand and sixteen, when they started building houses and we opened the street in two thousand and sixteen. You've heard the issues with dust and speed and paving the streets not going to improve speeding issues. Right now it's signed at fifteen miles an hour and has a speed bump in it and it, because it's gravel road, it potholes a little bit, so it's, speed is about as well controlled, the speed will get controlled right now, but the options for dust, beyond that, you can put lignin on roads, it's about eight hundred dollars a week to do it, and this is probably dusty. Lignin lasts longer, you can water it, which you have to water it two or three times a day. You can put lignin, which lasts up to a week, I'll say it's about an eight hundred dollar endeavor. And there's probably three and a half months out of the year that it's dusty, once it starts raining, the dust problem goes away. Or we can improve the street. In improvement, you have several options, I mean, the last council meeting, the traffic committee recommended we go to an LID process and at least put it out there, what it was, it would cost each property owner. As far as local improvement districts go, all the law states is it has to be fair. Some do it by pure front footage, what I mean by front footage is if it's a hundred thousand dollar project and you have a hundred feet of frontage, you're gonna pay ten thousand dollars if it's equally split. And if you have five thousand feet of frontage, you're gonna pay five thousand dollars. That's a fairly common method, there's also side streets can be assessed. There used to be a method and I tried to do some research, I couldn't find it, called Oregon State Method, which kind of did a how much the side streets, the percentage. And one thing to keep in mind, the developer, you've heard some testimony that they've already paid for the street that was paved in front of there, but if the city had made the developer pay the whole thing to begin with, they would have paid more for their lots and their property at that point in time, and they are getting a benefit out of it. What they paid for is what they got right now. So there is some assessment value, I estimated ten percent, which is that the existing homes on the paved streets are getting a benefit out of this, that's my own estimate, I think that's a fair estimate. We could go into all kinds of formulas and come up with different numbers, but that's it, so then if you are gonna pave it, you can do a front footage method, you can do this benefit assessment method, which would mean everybody on the street, you can even go to side streets. The original developer still owns one lot. So they'd be participating in this also. In fact, they own one lot and they own five that they can't even develop, so they'd be participating in this in addition. Or their heirs, because the original developer has since deceased. But the Anasits Trust would still be on the hook for a portion of it. My estimate of the improvements, the city has done a design in the past, it need to be refreshed and actually checked a little better, but my estimate of the cost to pave that street with sidewalk one side. Kerwin got in, we have to improve that disabled access ramps, anytime you touch a street, you gotta deal with that, was two hundred and sixteen thousand. There's that would be three hundred and eighty feet of street, but I think there's three hundred and forty feet of frontage that's undeveloped. Verified numbers, I got up at four this morning, so I apologize. In order to make it back for this meeting, I was ten hours east, so. I think I wrote it in here, but I believe it's three hundred and eighty feet of street that would and three hundred and forty feet would be assessed, because the end of the street, they put in a hammerhead, we'd have to turn the hammerhead out. So those are your options, the city can participate, the city has participated in the past, we, I specifically know of sixteenth, but Bill brought up another one, and I can't remember which one it was that you thought the city participated in. I strongly recommend the city does not go and offer up paving the hole at no cost to the property owner, you have seven miles of gravel roads. You have California Street, for an example, part of Myrtle that probably, I'm not gonna say quite reached the amount of traffic this one receives, but there's a fifteen unit leased apartment on California, they get a lot of traffic. And so I recommend you stay with the pay-to-play in some form. Or you are setting yourself a precedence where everybody wants.
Yeah, I, I guess in this one, on this particular street, Bill's our expert, because that was after I was not in office, so you sit on that, but the one where we hit, you know, we put the sewer in coming down the hill, the one that Mr. Smith was, was sort of the patriot of being upset. Yeah, I think so, yeah, that was it, and we, it was an action we needed to do, so we did. And then it was sort of a gravel road or became that way, and then it was a dust and the whatever else going on there. So that was one that, that was more initiated on our behalf, or, you know, for what we believe for the city use was. But we ended up on that one paying half of the cost and, and the residents around there paid the, the remaining half of that. And I think it's those limited situations where we have created or facilitated something for a bigger picture that is how we end up participating in, in these things, and, and would seem to me, this one was one that we, we did create. You know, I, I, obviously, from a safety sense, it, it has a bigger use for the, the whole area over there to utilize that street light that's already there, so I, I think we should be participating somewhat, but I don't believe it's a fifty percent, or maybe it's a twenty-five percent. You know, going on that is, yes, we've, we've opened it, yes, we think it's important, and traffic will be, be utilizing it that way. But I don't think it sets precedent, what it is, is we have had a couple of those, which are unique in what's going on now. Folks say, no, that's good information, let, let me give you one other one, that's a little weird, it'll be real quick. All the gravel roads at the south end of the airport, in the last go around that we really had community block grant money, big money, we decided, you know, low and moderate income, we're gonna pave your streets, you won't be bitching about the grading and getting the holes and whatever. And so we were gonna allocate that for free using the block grants. And the people came in and protested the fact that we would pave their roads for free, because that would raise their taxes. So we, okay, we won't.
So another, any other counselors have a comment?
I have a comment or a question, is, is that road that heads south and hits Newmark, is that designated in any capacity at our TSP?
It is, it is part of a collector, because it comes out at the light, a minor collector. A residential collector, and it is designated as such.
Okay, that carries some weight, in my opinion. Because the collector, that's the same as me, me is a collector. So me carries twenty-two hundred cars a day, so it's probably not the same traffic count by any stretch, but collector, in my opinion, if the city has designated a road as a collector, then the city should probably share the burden of, of upgrading the street pavement.
Counselor Leeson?
Well, I know, I mean, I think the people that probably benefited least from it are those ones that, that live on the gravel road. Because they didn't, I mean, it wasn't open initially, but I lived over there, I lived in the Edgewood area, and I used that all the time, and I know the community, that neighborhood uses that road constantly, because it's the easiest way to get in and out of me. So if we were gonna do something, I do believe that we should help in some capacity, whatever that is. But if you were gonna do something based on an LID, I think it's a, it would be a benefits system, because there's a lot of people that benefit from that road being on that light and it being open.
Well, there's a couple of options, council can initiate an LID, especially with a health issue, it's been brought up, the dust is a health issue. You can initiate one anyone. Or we ask the residents to initiate one, if you're familiar with them, it takes fifty-one percent of the residents to say they want one to initiate it. It takes two-thirds, once it starts, it takes two-thirds to remonstrate against it, to stop it. If the council starts an LID with whatever participation you establish, this is work session, we're not making decisions tonight. One thing that's in the rules in our local improvement districts is the residents that are, we designated as, as benefited are on the hook for the costs until it's remonstrated, so what, just so you're aware, if we start, like I said, we have about a I would say an eighty-plus percent design already completed, but you start an LID, you do a full estimate, you do start the assessment district, you're gonna have to develop the assessment district, send out the letters, there's costs associated with that. Not necessarily extremely significant at this point, but once you start a local improvement district, the residents, whether they want to be or not, even if they remonstrate against it, are on the hook for whatever percentage, this, if city says we're gonna pay for twenty-five percent of it, you're on the hook for seventy-five percent, and in this case, I don't want to throw a number out, but it wouldn't be significant, I, I would because we'll have some legal costs, we'll have some engineering costs and that thing associated to get all this document out to them, so they can remonstrate against it, should they so choose. I wouldn't say that would be over thirty thousand dollars, I don't even think it'd be that high, but they're on the hook for that number, once you start a district.
And so how long does it take for them to pay that?
Standard is five years, council could adopt ten years, it's you know, and realistically, I'm surprised more people don't do it, because a roadway is going up, but just a pure roadway and with the economy right now, who knows where anything's at. Is about two hundred and fifty dollars a foot to do sidewalk, one side curb and and a roadway, now that's up and down right now, fuel prices are going up, you know, that's I'll, I'll say, three years ago, it was about a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety, but I, so I'm a little bit there. And if you have a hundred feet of frontage, you're only paying half of that. And over ten years, so easy number, two hundred and fifty dollars a foot, that's twenty-five thousand dollars, that's you're only paying half of that, so it's twelve thousand five hundred. Throwing some engineering costs, that's twenty percent, fifteen thousand dollars, so you're paying fifteen hundred dollars a year. Plus a little interest, sixteen hundred dollars a year for ten years, that's not easy, but it is not a huge cost.
And it's on their, it's on their property taxes?
As an assessment, just, and it shows up on your, when you pay your property taxes, at the end of the year, you pay this special assessment.
And then when the, so if somebody sold the house, it would go along with the home?
Correct.
Okay, so I know that you have a very methodical way of ranking the streets based off of how much usage is on the streets, the traffic counts, and it's danger and so forth, so in, when that, so it was a gravel road before it was a dead-end gravel road, and when it came open, did that change where it landed on the sheet, did it move up a little bit, or is it, what's taken into consideration?
Part of it's a new road, and we really haven't ranked our gravel, as far as our, we have a pavement assessment. We don't have a, you know, gravel road is not considered fully developed, we, and we do spend some money on them, you know, our policy has been primarily you buy the rock, we grade it and spend the time to maintain it. We have put rock because of the compliance, we, the city has actually purchased rock and put on that segment of Brussels partially, because it's a collector, which we don't normally do. We also, one year we put which worked out fairly well for a while, we took our, when we mill our pavement, we have grinding, so there's asphalt in that, we took our millings and put it in place of rock, recycled asphalt, it's what's called gravel. There's less dust in it, because it has asphalt with it already, so it tends if you did enough of it, and you could almost roll it and create a poor pavement, but but we put that on one year, we took our recycle and put it on, which held the dust down for over a month, but we don't have that much recycle every year to keep doing that, but anyway, there's those are your options. This is a work session to give you options, it's not to make a decision.
Did our city administrator have something to add on this?
Yes. So I, I keep in contact with, with Ms. Mary from Brussels, she came in, in fact, saw me recently. And she had expressed that she was potentially going to file a couple complaints with different agencies, and I told her and said, that you're right, I understand that. You know, that, that doesn't just change, you know, my thoughts or feelings, you always exercise the rights of you, I know. But I told her, I said, and, and I reiterate, her request was never to have it paved, she wants it closed. And, and we don't think it's in the best interest of the city to close it, in fact, I think that you'll have bigger pushback. And so I said, well, okay. The council was heard from one person, which is you, Mary. And I said, you know, you need to go out to your neighbors and fan out and talk to them. I will say that the most recent time, and you should not be surprised what, what she said, I'm gonna paraphrase, but it's like yeah, I'm going out talking to folks, but, but they're not interested in paying for that, okay? So from a staff standpoint, there's a couple things, you know, questions. I, I would like to slow this down a little, because there's a couple things I'd like to know from an administrative standpoint, and Ralph may have the answers, but, you know, I was at a conference last week, so and although he zoomed over here, he could have zoomed in, so appreciate them getting over here in ten hours, that's a lot of driving, but the, the first thing is, is if you live in that area, and I've gone over, I've driven it multiple times, is what's the traffic flow, and so we, we could put up, so that we can actually see who's actually using it, what's the traffic flow, what's the traffic count within that neighborhood? Because when we get to the point of looking at who is actually using that, then we have to assign percentages, costs, sort of estimate that, because it would behoove us to bring that back to you while at the same time letting the residents in that community know that this is sort of kind of being discussed. Because ultimately is going to affect their pocketbook, and when something affects someone's pocketbook, you don't want that, well, I didn't know about this. They say that about everything. But it's like, as you go into the neighborhood, you know, that usage dictates dollar signs, you know, and I would think the closer you are to Brussels, the higher use, you know, unless you're always going out and going to backway, and there's, there's ways to go. So the traffic pattern and sort of seeing the, the pattern, one is, is important to me, and, and I would think should be important to you all, and then from there, then, you know, and, and this isn't a knock to, to Ralph, you know, Ralph has worked up the estimates, but the reality is, by the time he goes out to bid and we get bids, that figure may be higher, so we should go ahead and calculate for that, and he's good about doing that, but also want to protect Ralph, because things have been going up faster than he can keep up with it. And then, then allow us then to come back and say, okay, at, at a high level, here's a map, here's some basic figures, and over, say, five-year or ten-year, this is what we will estimate and show it to you visually. That's what I would like, while at the same time making sure that the public knows, we're talking about your street here. Does that make sense?
It does.
And Ralph, is that cool with you?
Absolutely, our traffic counter was broken, or I had some, at least traffic count on Brussels, I didn't initially have the neighborhood feeds, but
so, and I, I'll convey back, in fact, I have a note here with an asterisk, send to Mary, because, you know, I'll send her this to let her know, hey, this is the latest, and I'll communicate with her and say, you know, we present to council, we want to gather some more information from staff, but at the same point, before we like try to have a real dialogue about it, make sure these residents know that we're dialoguing about something that potentially is going to cost them, and I think that's the open, transparent way to go about it, so if you agree, you know, we can close out this gender item, and we can work on that over, and, and it'll take, you know, we'll, we'll do it within our staff resources, as you know, we're down our city planner, so Ralph's doesn't have his full staff, but we'll work on this, and then come back to you when we're ready to sort of redress it, if you will. Because as Ralph says, we're in those months where it's gonna get rainy and dusting, it'll be an issue. So we've got some time.
Okay, I think that is a good plan to move forward, Ralph, thank you for
Appreciate the
Zooming on back here quickly to be part of this meeting. Did you get anything?
No, actually, we had a three-point out there yesterday evening, passed on it, because if we crippled it, I'd be there a while, or I would have been there this morning, and it's got a heart.
Okay, so let's see. Number four is review of the city council agenda for tomorrow evening. So taking a look at the agenda, I see here tomorrow night, after we call the meeting to order, that we're going to be doing a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week, may I request Sparky to come in the suit to do the proclamation with us? If chance I can get. If Chief has the availability.
It's not him in the suit. We'll, we'll call Sparky and see if Sparky's available.
Then we have, so we'll do two proclamations tomorrow, and, and we're aware that that the, so there's the Indigenous People Day. Thank you, so, so I'm trying to explain, we wanted to do this at a council meeting, so we realized it's a day late, but the intentions are to deliver the proclamation at the actual council meeting, so that's why it's tomorrow.
Yes, we've invited representatives from both tribes.
Perfect, yes, we're looking forward to that, and we'll have other ceremonial items, Chief, you'll be here to swear in, is that, how do you pronounce? Was, I'll, I'll do the swearing in with the chief by my side here, Kealan? Kellen? It's, it, it is Kealan. Key, I'm gonna, Kealan?
Like, like Ingle Key.
Yeah, Kealan, well, I want to have it prepared tomorrow, so I don't mess it up during the swearing in, and Soulsby? Oh, it is Kellen.
So now we don't even know Chief, now there's, there's three names on
Okay, now we, now we have really
Okay, so we'll have the swearing in, the patrol officer, we'll have staff recognition, you'll have Nick White available for five years of service, right? Macy will have some certificates, I'm guessing, Daniel Baldwin is our I was thinking World War Two operator. Didn't they, I was like, wow, wait, what? It's a W W T P operator two for ten years of service, so we'll do the staff recognition for that. On, on the consent calendar, was there anything now that we needed to address in the, the minutes or the acknowledgement of the bills? Yes, question?
Yes, I will be pulling the approval of the minutes from the consent calendar.
Approval of the minutes from the consent calendar, you're gonna pull those out, is there a correction that we need to make?
Several, actually, but the first one that caught my eye was that there it had been the consistent practice that each and every page of the minutes has a footer that had the, the date, as well as the page number, and that is that's missing here, so that being as it's a legal document, we need to have that.
So we, let's, city administrator and city recorder, how would you like these, do you want these comments now, how would you like them to be communicated to you? We have, so I heard you say page number and footer?
Yes, in the footer, there's always Mark Ben City Council, the date, and the page keeper. You have to, it's missing the date.
Well, it's certainly up to the council, it's one sign they go in the official book, so yes, if that's what they've had, you know, we can certainly update it, but that's not a requirement of the law, but so you know, we can have them reprinted with that for tomorrow, and if that's the only issue, then that's, that's easy to address.
Comment that I would make is that under item number thirteen, where Police Chief McCullough came forward and detailed the altercation that took place two weeks ago. This, I, I have read the, or I have, I have listened to the audio of the meeting, and I very clearly state that the reason I got involved, and it wasn't a discussion on the health of the tree, she was meeting with the arborist in question, because she was going to have a tree cut down, and I have no business having an opinion about that. And I very clearly said that the neighbor And I have no business having an opinion about that. And I very clearly said that the neighbor.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just pause you right there for just to say, is it the minutes? Are are you arguing, are you in the situation or the correction of the minutes?
Correction to the minutes, the way it is currently written.
Okay.
So the question then comes, is this a correction to what happened or a correction to what was stated by the chief?
Correction as to what my comments are. I guess two things, it. A correction to the comments by the chief on it was not regarding the health of the tree. The discussion was cutting the tree. So the second, the second one is that I very clearly stated. That my friend who owns the property to north where the tree does extend onto his property. This is his vacation house. He lives in Washington, upper Washington state.
And I'm gonna grab our, um, city attorney who's online here as well, because I just want to make sure that we're. It's the minutes that we're, we're talking about what was stated, not.
Yes, me.
Do you understand what I'm saying, Mr. Wolf?
Summarizing, so she is summarizing what was stated during those council comments. And so if the chief said X, we're, we're not going to correct what the chief said. If if what the chief said is incorrect, she may write. An attachment to that, um, uh. As far as what she said, if if what she is claiming, what she said. Was incorrectly documented in the minutes as incorrect. Then then certainly the city recorder pro temp can review the audio to make sure that what's here is what was said. Um, but yet again, um. You know, it's usually, uh, the, the, the council always has the right to submit a dissent as long as it's in accordance with council rules. That said, your city attorney is available.
Okay, Matt, uh, Mark, what were you, did you catch that?
Yeah, and that's accurate, you know, and the other, the other piece to add is that you you do have the. Um, you know, the, the, the minutes. Do not need to be a verbatim of of what was said, and you do have your recordings posted online. So if there was. Somebody wanted to. Um. Listen word for word what was spoken at that meeting, that's available online as well.
Okay, and then if Counselor Nordoff wanted to clarify anything, uh, she could do that, she could use her council comment times to do that. Would that be a correct space to do that in?
Yeah, and and also, uh, your administrator mentioned a written, um. Statement that could get attached. For the, uh, for the.
Tell, it's my opinion that it ought to follow the audio, and in my opinion, these. Draft minutes do not follow the audio.
Okay.
Um, so I think there needs to be, I think it should be tabled. I think that it should be. Presented as it is in the audio, because there's quite a bit of detail here.
And thank you for your opinion on that. We do have our city attorney who just had stated. That the minutes are not, they're not meant to be verbatim, um, but.
Meant to be inaccurate either.
So they're not, what we're hearing though is that. They're not a reflection of inaccuracy. If somebody ever does want to view an entire video, um, they can do that. So I. Mark, that's what you were indicating is that they're not meant to be a direct, um, verbatim.
They're not meant to be ver- verbatim, but if if, if the. If the, uh, the minutes say that that chief stated X Y Z. And it, and the, and the audio recording clearly state. It's something different, then I think correcting that in the minutes would be, would be appropriate. But we're not, what, all the minutes are there is to record what was stated, not the. You know, accuracy of what was stated.
Okay.
Matter of fact?
Yes.
Great, um, two things, one, um, as, as in following with. The council rules. If there is, uh, one dissent on a consent agenda item. So I'm highlighting that for tomorrow that that can in fact be. Uh, pulled out and put as its own item, which we will do.
Okay, thank you.
The second is, um, I'd like to afford our. Uh. City Recorder Pro Tem to actually, she does the minute, she listens to the audio if you want to address it. Since you're the one that puts together, do you see any issues here from your work or your review of the audio?
I will review it tomorrow to just double check since we are following this agenda item and be sure that they're correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
So for tomorrow, what, um, what you'll hear from your, uh. Your recorder pro temp is that she will, from now until tomorrow, she will review. The audio to make sure that what she has listed here is correct, because you want to correct. Doesn't mean that it's going to be all encompassing, um, she chooses. What to reflect here based on her, that she's responsible for the minutes. Um, and then, uh, we will pull it out as its own agenda item.
And that's. A, is that?
And that would be for A, so we will, um. Uh, pull that out, and so what we'll do is we will move that down to other business.
Okay.
Um, and then, um, move that approval of the minutes to that location. Um, does that sound okay, Mark?
Yeah, that sounds good.
And with the, and with the comment on the page number and footnote, is that just style choices I hear was hearing you say that's not? Um.
That, that's, that's very easy done, um, again, you know, uh, you have one person normally. And obviously with pro temp filling in, so that's very easy to go back. She'll look at how the minutes have been done in the past. And then just update the footer. That's, that's easy to do. That's very easy to accommodate. That's not a correction thing. I just wanted to say it wasn't, it's not required by law, but again, if that's how they are in the past, we want to try for consistency, and so that's. You know, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there, um, any other items in the consent calendar that we need to discuss?
Right, looking down here, um. I will briefly tell you, you, you can chat about if you want, um, this heat pump system for the police department. Um, uh. They don't, actually, everybody must think we have heat and air everywhere in this building. That's the furthest from the truth. It, it, it does exist. And in order to get them a heat pump system, we actually have to run electrical. All the way to accommodate that, um, this building, as you know, has been used for multiple things over all the years. And so, um, I will tell you, the heat that they went through alone, just the heat. During, uh, the last few months, um, I wouldn't normally put any employee through. Um, so we're trying to accommodate them on, uh, making sure that, uh, uh, we can keep our employees, uh, comfort. And so that is, um. Uh, D. And I think that's, um, and then the, uh, NPDS permit, if you want to know, that's just normal. Testing, but that's up to you.
Waste water.
So. Yeah, that's our required permit. There, there's nothing really controversial there, but, um, if you all have questions, uh, Steph's here to answer.
Okay, any other?
Waste water, right? NPDS. Special food discharge and water system. Only have that. I'm very.
Is that, is that what you call a housekeeping permit type of thing?
It's with our new permit, we receive.
Um, we got a new permit in February, um. DQ has been behind in almost everybody's. But this is a new standard. We have to do toxics. What this actually does is test our effluent. With live fish, and so the toxics. Will have to run for three years, um. It's. In everybody's new permit that they're getting, uh, it's just a new standard that they're testing, um. We won't have to do this every forever. It's just they want to see if our effluent, whether it meets all the other elements of the permit or not, it's toxic to. They use a smelt and they, I think I didn't bring the copy you can see.
Giant. Help. My said. And the top smell.
So they use several varieties to see if there's any toxicity created from our effluent. We, we got our effluent video. Um, which if you want, watch thirty minutes of crabs and other things, fire swimming around, it's. An interesting video, but there's growth all around it. There's crabs, there's starfish on it, everything else, so.
Yeah.
We, we have no fears, but we have to go through this process.
It's a product of growing and continual environmental changes, uh, for enforcement, so. All right, from there, we're gonna make it, we'll go to. All right.
Compliance.
Uh, compliant, yeah, 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 not regular compliant, yes, and we're like, well, uh, from there you'd have public comment, we'll know tomorrow. Uh, all right, public hearing number six, um, this is thirty one twelve fine code, uh, fine. Pines.
Pines.
Yes, fine street for code compliance. This, this case was before you previously.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you had a very passionate presentation, um, and, um. And so we're back at you because you have before and now, and, um. Uh, staff would like, uh, the governing body to, uh. To, to, it'll be a public hearing so that we can address and resolve this issue once and for all. And take some action. We need, uh, we need the support and backing.
Okay, so, so tomorrow night we'll have the public hearing. Um, I see that the staff recommendations, um. The staff recommends to authorize to receive bids for abatement, junk debris, dismantled vehicles, um, and attractive. Uh, nuisances not properly stored within an enclosed structure, and that fines, um. To date of the abatement be recorded as a lien on the, on that property. Um, tomorrow night, when in the public hearing, I think I saw, we have testimony. And we'll have a full public hearing script to read. Is that correct? Okay.
Correct.
Um.
And then to, confirmed to the record, um, the property owner at thirty one twelve is aware tomorrow, and has been invited for tomorrow.
Yes.
And the, the, the last date when the, from the testimony was that, I'm looking at the letter here, where it says final notice of violation is August nineteenth. But that wasn't, when was the last public hearing that we had?
Uh. Go ahead, no, you go, you're absolutely correct, um, that was, uh, so, um, this guy, um, and then we had some staff things. This should have actually been on your agenda, um, and so it was in a holding queue. And so that's why it's on this meeting rather than a previous meeting, so that's, that's the first thing.
Mm-hmm.
And then, uh, Ralph can answer the last time he was there.
It's only been going on for seventeen years.
So.
And that's, that's the crux of it, I mean. We talked to Mr. Styles, I believe. It was actually August of twenty twenty one when he came in.
Mm-hmm.
Um. He has been talked to by various. Staff for seventeen years. Uh, he's done some of the work. Like, uh, I know for a fact I was there with, um, Bar Chief Meeker. When he had to mow his lawn, um, but the. The property is actually. Changed little and accumulated more, uh, the last. Gary may be able to tell you when we actually red tagged the vehicles, he just moved them on his property, um. Uh, there's not a lot more room to park something on his property now. The biggest part of this is. Bringing it to you, he had his, we gave him his notice. He had the right to appeal. He has ten days to appeal the city council, which he had actually. Since he didn't appeal. The fines started anyway, but he had an opportunity to appeal. He didn't actually appeal that. We're bringing this forward to you now to declare it a nuisance. Because until council declares it a nuisance. Um, we can't take action to clean it up ourselves.
Mm-hmm.
As in the past. Most of what we're after is compliance. Um, whether you want to levy the fines or not. Or levy part of the fines, in fact, the fines are up to twenty four thousand dollars now. Because it hasn't, the only action it appears. That he has some made, some attempts to repair his fence to screen it a little better, but. That's the only action we've seen since giving him notice.
I think he has two, two vehicles that are licensed now.
I believe his wife drives one to work every day, so I, I would assume that one's licensed and insured, yeah.
Free there on the street now. Got those after.
Well, that was one of the most interesting parts of your pictures, which I appreciated, was all these. Twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, twenty oh nine.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's a, it's there to be. Too many that were very current.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Good, um. Ralph, anything on the Marion Street pedestrian crossing island?
I'll be real brief, Marion Street crossing island, we took. Fourth before you. Almost two years ago. Um, as an introductory. Issue, uh, there were some. Traffic counts associated with it. ODOT originally proposed it without the flashing beacon. Council approved to allow ODOT to do this, but would, but not without. The flashing beacon, because that was their original. Proposal, they were just gonna put the island in and later put the beacons in, well. Um, we didn't think that was appropriate. We have before you today as a contract, they're finally. Got to that point, and it includes the flashing beacons, uh. There is some potential staff costs associated with it. Um, and the reason Coos County is involved in this is because they happen the old, own the old Grand Oil property now. And they'll be losing, part of their dry oil will be removed in order to. Put in the disabled access ramps there, so that's.
They need, they need the beacons on Broadway.
Oh, sure they do, yeah. They do. In the one issue I, I want to reiterate to you, that'll make any turn left on Marion, or what we used to call Log Dump Road.
What did you call it?
Log Dump Road is what it was called.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, going along the airport when it was open.
First I was thinking it was cutting off Safeway until I finally saw your plan.
But. That left turn will be from a live lane and the people that left turn from Safeway that. Currently, a lot of them, I'm not saying. Try to get out there and use that as a refuge lane to merge into traffic. Are not gonna, so it will make it a little more difficult to get out of Safeway. I just want to make you aware of that.
Someone's tried that by Cedar Electric a few times.
Turn left, you mean?
Just go out by the light.
Well, Cedar Electric one hasn't been too bad. It's the one at fourteen.
Oh, yeah.
Water gate is killing us.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
Ralph, if you'll hang loose there and, uh, if the council will oblige me. Uh, number nine is the ratification of the Teamsters, uh, contract. Um, we discussed that, uh, previously, so nothing new there. Uh, Ralph, if, um, and I'm deliberately skipping over, I'm coming back to one. Ralph, if you'll, um, address number ten, uh, replacement truck tank and pump for biosol, solids, solids handling.
Our tank has developed some pinhole leaks on our, we haul. Three hundred and fifty to seven hundred thousand gallons of biosolids to our. Biosolid site, which is, uh, Christian Semenage. And we've had to replace the pump, or we had the pump worked on, the tank starting leak. Originally, we were looking at, um, buying a new. Sludge. In discussions. With staff and for various reasons, uh. It's a good chassis, the, the truck runs well. The newer trucks don't get as good a fuel economy if you buy a new truck. At least till we get into the vehicles, I'm not gonna get into that. They're, they're not there yet, um. But the chassis is good and. We can replace a tank, we can purchase a tank. Which not only if. Our truck goes bad in ten years, um. We can take that tank and mount on a new chassis, uh, for a. About just over a third of the cost to buy a whole new truck.
Hmm.
There's not a lot wrong with our truck. Um, it drives to the biosolid site and back is primarily it. So our recommendation, and we talked to several manufacturers, uh, on the tanks, they're basically like a set pitch haulers, the style of truck. The. Tank, Erickson Tank and Pump. Builds a real solid product, uh. And we couldn't really get estimates from others because they don't want to do it. We've been in discussions with their Erickson Tank and Pump. And if our tank can be salvaged, then have to.
And if our tank can be salvaged, they don't have to weld it and stuff. They'll give us a five thousand dollar credit on it, but we received a quote eighty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty.
That's for eight gauge steel, dude. That's pretty heavy duty.
It's, uh, and they do a nice system, so we'll have half a new truck, truck in essence.
The working part.
The working part, yeah. And like I said, that tank will be good for twenty to thirty years. So not necessarily, I said, a pump will be, but the tank will be sold.
So we will get for you, bud.
Yeah.
Correct. And rather than spending two hundred and seventy thousand on a new, whole new system, uh, we're suggesting we spend eighty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars on and something that we can use in the future.
Next one would be electric, uh, slug truck?
Well, we can put it on an electric chassis. We have the tank.
Yes, yeah.
My goal is we'll just transport it by drone. Uh, with that said, counsel, um, this point I'd like to go back to number eight. Um, council, uh, President Richardson, uh, has declared a, um, conflict interest and has indicated that, uh, he'll be stepping down for the dice.
All right, thank you. So this is your, your time to take a Kit Kat break.
I can do that.
Yes, and we have somebody here presenting today?
Yes, we have Miss, uh, Angie that will be presenting on behalf of North Bend Sanitation. Uh, and for those listening, uh, North Bend Sanitation is not the city of North Bend, it's their own company. So Miss Angie, if you'll come to the mic and you might have to pull it a little closer.
Um, thank you, and thank you for waiting so patiently. We should try to, I, I apologize, we should have moved you to the top of the meeting, so.
Oh, I don't mind it.
Okay, so what do we have here? There's some information in our packet. Um, on page one fifty-eight.
So, um, to preface this, um, if you go to page one fifty-eight, um, you have a existing franchise agreement in place between the city and, uh, North Bend Sanitation. Uh, it is adjusted and they, uh, do it at a percentage, uh, eighty-five percent of the CPI. Uh, the current CPI, uh, has come in, uh, it is six point three percent. Um, they're not asking for the full amount, they're asking for eighty-five percent of the CPI, which is an increase of five point four percent. And you'll notice that that's, uh, approximately one dollar twenty cents per month increase for a basic thirty-five gallon residential car service and a dollar sixty-two, uh, per yard for commercial container service. And so, uh, you, uh, uh, the franchise fees, um, are collected and remitted to, um, uh, the city of North Bend, um, and is in the amount of five percent of gross revenue. And so this is for them to increase sanitation rates, uh, which is an annual thing for your contract. And Miss Angie can answer any questions you may have?
Questions from the council? I appreciate you pointing that out, that this is the sanitation company happens to be in North Bend, but it's not the North Bend Sanitation.
Right.
Similar as to the Housing Authority, is not the North Bend Housing Authority, it happens to be in North Bend. Um, so these are, um, so.
North Bend lanes, however.
North Bend lanes?
We'll, we'll, we'll take that. We'll, yeah, I'll take ownership if you allow me.
Um, so the franchise fees, so I, I see here that the staff recommendation is to prove the request would be increased for North Bend Sanitation as authorized in, in the resolution. Um, any questions from the counselors on this?
Yeah, I, I guess the only thing I'd say consistently, uh, they've been well under normally seventy-five, but seventy-five now to eighty-five percent of what the, uh, um, what the hell is CPI?
Yeah.
In, in that particular thing. An interesting part is they provide an excellent service beyond simply what they're doing, you know, picking up your trash, all the community based stuff and the other things that come out. They're an excellent operator that is, um, we've been privileged to work with through that. So, uh, it certainly makes a whole lot of sense to approve that and continue that relationship.
Thank, I, thank you. Good points. I know there's a lot of volunteer service that goes out that picking up trash service, not just in North Bend, but throughout Coos County. So thank you for doing that.
Oh, yeah.
Anything else? Okay. That's a long ninety minutes, man. I apologize.
Where is that? We'll be here tomorrow.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, um, if you'll note, same process will occur tomorrow. Um, the, uh, counselor, uh, will be able to declare the, the conflict. Um, Mayor Pro Tem, if you'll reflect in the notice that, um, the counselor uh, was absent for the discussion so that, uh, we can, uh, stay clear of any, uh, ethics complaints. Well, stay clear of any ethics violations. People can still file complaints. So
Yeah.
With that said, um, if you can retrieve them, that'd be great. And, uh, Madam Mayor, I think that, um, other than the procedural stuff of the.
Yeah, that would conclude our meeting for tomorrow night. Any action from executive session, your report, committee reports, council comments, and we already, we do know we'll have an item under other business. Um, and so that takes us back into the work session agenda. Where did my work session begin to go? Was there anything else left on the work session agenda?
Well, just, uh, do we have any public comments?
Yeah, so no public comments, and we've already had our executive session, so, um, I believe that.